At this time, I'll call the regular meeting to order. Clerk of the Board, please call the roll.
Commissioner Baker?
Present.
Commissioner Bodak?
Here.
Commissioner Garrettson?
Here.
Commissioner Kowalski?
Here.
Commissioner Leon?
Present.
Commissioner Mirabella?
Present.
Commissioner Williams?
Here.
Vice Chairwoman Palmary Mueded?
Here.
Chairman Granados?
Here.
Chairman, you have nine commissioners present for this evening's regular meeting.
Thank you very much. Clerk of the Board, please lead us in the prayer and salute to the flag.
Humbly we ask God to give her peace and the love of charity, to get the entire family of nations true agreement with his will, and to grant the light of his spirit on all who work for justice and peace. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk of the Board, please read the statement of compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act.
The chair wishes to announce that pursuant to the requirements of New Jersey statute sanitized, Title 10, Chapter 4, Section 10 of the Open Public Meetings Act, adequate notice of this meeting, the Board of County Commissioners of the County of Union has been given by mailing the annual meeting schedule for the year 2023, along with periodic changes necessitated by circumstance to the newspapers circulating within the County of Union who are designated to receive such notice, and by posting the annual meeting schedule for the year 2023 in the Administration Building, and further by filing the annual meeting schedule for the year 2023 with the Office of the County Clerk.
Thank you very much. May I have a motion to approve the communications?
No move, Mr. Chairman.
May I have a second?
Second.
Motion is made by Commissioner Mirabella, seconded by Commissioner Kowalski. Clerk of the Board, please call the roll.
Commissioner Baker?
Aye.
Commissioner Bodak?
Yes.
Commissioner Garrettson?
Yes.
Commissioner Kowalski?
Yes.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Mirabella?
Aye.
Commissioner Williams?
Aye.
Vice Chairwoman Palmary Mueded?
Aye.
And Chairman Granados?
Aye.
Chairman, you have nine votes in the affirmative for the communication?
Thank you very much. Prior to moving on to today's public comments section, I would like to turn the meeting over to Fiscal Chairwoman Palmary Mueded to offer some remarks on the 2023 budget, which is being introduced this evening, Resolution Number 2023-349. Vice Chair?
Thank you, Chair. Good evening. As Chairwoman of the Fiscal Committee, we have been working over the last several weeks conducting reviews of the 2023 executive budget under the advisement of the County Commissioners, County Manager Ed Oatman, and all of our department heads. Tonight, I am happy to introduce the Union County 2023 budget at $528,894,565.3, and the levy is $367,295,299.43, which holds a 0% tax increase for the fourth year in a row. The County of Union's system has been successful in alleviating cost increases during economic downturns stemming from inflation and post-pandemic recovery. We work together to prioritize our efforts in strengthening the safety and programs for our residents while maintaining all of our essential services and employees with no layoffs. We are also maintaining our credit rating at AAA, which is the highest obtainable, further demonstrating our strong fiscal footing. I'd like to mention some of our notable accomplishments. Union County's healthy surplus has allowed us to fund and open up the first county-run certified lab in conjunction with Kane University for diagnostic testing and critical public health research during this pandemic. Tens of thousands of households within Union County have benefited from our food distribution programs over the past two and a half years with over 18 million meals provided. In an environment where the average state health benefits increase for CY 2023 is 21.6%, the County of Union was able to enter into shared service agreements with Union College and the Vocational Technical High School for health benefits coverage under the county's self-insurance plan as a cost savings measure for both public education institutions. We are continuing to realize the savings from the shared services agreement with Essex County wherein we augmented service delivery for juvenile detention and adult corrections in 2819 and 2021. Understanding the need for long-term financial planning, the Union County Board of County Commissioners continuously streamlined county operations and reduced its pensionable obligations without sacrificing quality of service. In a climate where state and local governments throughout New Jersey are set to pay nearly 10% more for workers enrolled in the public employee's retirement system and the police and firemen's retirement system, the County of Union is happy to announce its pension bills for 2023 are set to decrease by .74%. This budget also funds the chairman's building stronger Union County initiatives for 2023, which include mental health programs and services, housing or rental assistance programs, strengthening workforce relationships, building an inclusive county, enhancing parks, recreation, roadways, and supporting our children and youth. Today's budget is a result of a collaborative effort, the culmination of months of planning, community outreach, and hard work. I would like to thank the Board of County Commissioners for their support, the Department of Finance, and department heads for their hard work in the budget process. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And we thank you, Chair of the Fiscal Committee, Vice Chairwoman Kimberly Palmary Mueded, for leading the efforts and making sure you're working with the administration. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So now, the meeting is open to the public for the purpose of commenting on resolutions being offered for adoption and/or any governmental issue that a member of the public feels may be of concern. Kindly state your name and town or residence for the record, and if speaking on a resolution on the agenda, please note the resolution to which you're referring to and adhere to the five-minute time limit.
Good evening. My name is Ann Margaret Shannon of Union Township. But more importantly, I am the President of the Union Township Education Association, the UTA. It is the mission of the UTA to educate young people and teach them to stand up for what is important. And politicians trying to rewrite history in not only Union County but my dear hometown, the Township of Union, is the definition of important. You are publicly elected officials who know and understand the integrity of the electoral process, yet in this case you allowed it to break down. This is like a primary where three names should have been on the ballot, but the County Commissioners arbitrarily picked who could actually be on the primary. You gave the current seal no opportunity to make it to the final ballot. But honestly, why have a ballot at all? We usually have an election to fix what's wrong, but there's nothing wrong with the Union County Seal, so why this vote? This seal, in fact, depicts an important part of our history and should be lauded, not replaced. Who even suggested we need this change? Who among you has higher expectations than is holding the county's seal in order to advance your own personal goals? So many people all over the nation are trying to erase history, but I honestly didn't think it would happen here in Union County. Among other battles, the Battle of Connecticut Farms helped to change the course of the Revolutionary War. The murder of Hannah Caldwell was so important that it encouraged many to fight for their new country and help guarantee the victory of the American Revolution. Why are you trying to erase it? Why? Some people say because of gun violence, but please don't hide behind that cause. Do not confuse today's gun violence with Hannah's death. Getting rid of Hannah Caldwell on the seal will not get rid of gun violence. Yes, give gun violence its due, but not at the expense of the Union County Seal. Getting back to the UTA and educating our students and their families, it is so important to acknowledge that the Union Township Education Association has partnered with the Union Township Historical Society for years to educate our residents about Hannah Caldwell and how the Township of Union is so important in the history of the United States. We encourage and finance trips to the museum. We should be proud of Hannah's sacrifice. Why are you trying to hide its importance? If you weren't afraid to do the right thing, you would have asked people about the seal before you decided it had to be changed. Why do you get to make these changes without asking the residents? If you cared, you would have created a vote with three choices that include the current seal. So please, I ask you to drop this whole thing as a whole, but if you're not going to do that, I ask you to at least stop the current balloting, redo the vote, add a third choice to keep the county current seal, and do it because it's the right thing to do for all of Union County. Be proud of who we are and keep the current seal. Thank you.
Good evening, Commissioners. Chairman. My name is Johnny Rosser. I'm from the Township of Union. I am one of the founding members of the Vauxhall Historical Society Incorporated. The seal of the County of Union is a unique graphic reminder of our country's, of our county's history and revolution, and the American Revolution. The current seal is a dramatization of Hannah Caldwell's murder just after the Battle of Connecticut Farms, June 7, 1780, by a British or a Hessian soldier. While the seal does not historically portray Mrs. Caldwell's murder, the importance of the seal is its symbolism and meaning. This is the American Revolutionary War. The tragic death of Hannah Caldwell renewed the morale among the Continental troops and gave them a boost at the Battle of Springfield on June 23, 1780, a few weeks later. This was the last major battle of the American Revolutionary War to be fought in New Jersey. In 2020, Union County Board of Chosen Freeholders changed its name to Union County Board of County Commissioners. This name change required all things relating to Union County to be changed from Chosen Freeholders to County Commissioners. And what was the cost of that change? If the county's seal is changed, what will be, what will that mean to all the money that was spent on the previous change of going from County, from Chosen Freeholders to County Commissioners, which was only two years ago? Must now that money that was spent to make that change two years ago be spent the same thing for changing the county's seal? The current Union County Seal was authorized by Union County Board of Chosen Freeholders in 1933. For 90 years, which includes World War II, Korea, Vietnam, and other world events, why now is it important to change the county's seal of Union? The historical significance and potential costs outweigh the update of the Union County Seal. Thank you.
Good evening, Chairman and Board Members, and thank you for allowing Union County's Moms Demand Action Group to speak again on behalf of the proposed change to the Union County Seal.
Sorry, can you give us your name, please?
I'm sorry. That was the next sentence.
Oh, sorry. Sorry.
I'm Kathleen Dolan. I live in New Providence, and I've been a dedicated gun violence prevention advocate for the five years since the Parkland shooting. Gun violence comes in many forms and results from many different circumstances. Sometimes it is unintentional, but most times it is exceptionally intentional. The shooter intends to wound or kill their target. Sometimes it is for legal reasons, to neutralize a confirmed threat to public safety, but many times it is illegal and indiscriminate, and innocent people are caught in the crossfire. In all these illegal cases, we must focus on the circumstances that led to this event to prevent it from happening again, but we must also focus on the dead victims who are no longer alive to tell their story and the survivors whose lives are forever changed. In the case of Hannah Caldwell and the previous section of the seal that depicted her murder, what's important is that we honor the victim with dignity and respect. The scene of her murder in the former seal does not achieve that goal and gives just as much acknowledgement to the shooter as it does to the victim Hannah Caldwell. It doesn't matter that the murder scene isn't even historically accurate. What matters is that we should be honoring a brave woman who was unarmed and yet stood with her children in the face of armed soldiers as she was slain. This refresh action does not erase history. It honors her bravery in a more respectful way. We support and applaud the Union County Commissioners for their attention to this issue and look forward to a better representation of Mrs. Caldwell's ultimate sacrifice during the American Revolution when the new seal is approved. Thank you.
Good evening again, Commissioners. My name is Joanne Rijoppi. I serve as the Union County Clerk as President of the Union County Historical Society, and some of you may know that I used to sit up there also many years ago. As you know, Union County was originally part of Essex County, and we were one of just six original counties in the colony and later in the state of New Jersey. The other five were Bergen, Burlington, Middlesex, Monmouth, and Salem. New Jersey is also, of course, one of the original 13 colonies. I present for your review the seals of these counties, and I think you have them before you. Each and every one of those seals memorializes the significant history of the county and its contributions to the birth of our nation. From Bergen County Seal, symbolizing the transfer of property between indigenous peoples and colonists, to Monmouth County Seal, representing its agricultural contributions, to Middlesex Seal, depicting an armed member of the New Jersey militia during the Revolution. I suspect that the artists or artists who designed the two seals the Board is now considering to replace Mrs. Caldwell know little Union County history. What is even more disturbing is that the graphic in one of the seals of a plane ascending in the left quadrant to a tall building in the right quadrant directed by a compass graphic in the middle of the seal is disturbing. More than 60 Union County residents died on 9/11. I have heard from many people that this insensitive depiction is disturbing and recalls for them the horrendous terrorist event, and I doubt that's something that we want to promote. The second proposed seal predominantly displays the courthouse building, which is a 1931 17-story-tall tower structure that houses, with two exceptions, the state of New Jersey Judiciary Courts, not the county courts. It does house myself and the surrogate. So my question is, how does this building reflect the contributions of our county? I know the Commissions are caring individual people because you wouldn't be there if you weren't. So my suggestion for your consideration is that a firm be hired that understands history and designs a seal in keeping with our significant contributions to the founding of this country, while giving residents an opportunity to vote for it or to keep the present seal. Personally, I can think of no better depiction than honoring Mrs. Caldwell on the current seal. Thank you.
Sorry, just, I know we've been talking about this for the past, you know, two years or so, and one of the articles, I actually thought, you know, County Clerk, you were in favor of possibly changing the county's seal based off one of the articles we found in archives. That's from the Star Ledger back in 2011, where you stated that the seal has been in use by just the clerk's office until that time, according to County Clerk Joanne Rijoppi, who said she is not a fan. "It is not that I do not like it," she said. "I do not like what it portrays the county," or let me correct myself. "I don't think it portrays the county or is a symbol of everything the county is. I think it's very important to honor people, and especially Hannah Caldwell, but not in such a negative way."
And what was the date of that?
2011. But no, that's part of our archives information you provided where you weren't a fan of the seal, correct?
That's right.
Okay. Thank you.
Islam Ismail, Director of National United Youth Council Incorporated, once again, also representing the 1741 Project. As you recall, I came here originally in 2020 asking you all to research the devastation of what happened on February 25, 1741, when three slaves was burnt at the stake in regarding to what is suspected a uprising among the slaves in the region. Turned out to be false, some propaganda put out by the Spaniards, and so on and so on. For the record, we did meet earlier, representing of the Parks and Recreation and also from the Department of, I think Cultural Affairs, I believe it was. And that was just a listening meeting. They refer us, for the most part, back to you guys because you guys are the decision-makers. As I mentioned to you earlier in 2020, and repeated again and again, that we will settle less than, no less than, a monument of some sort at the site of the county courthouse. Now, let me just say one thing on the seal. One of the depiction shows the county courthouse by itself. To have that be a seal, that would definitely be very insensitive to many African Americans because we know that building represents the court proceeding and jail. And we know New Jersey have the highest percentage of African Americans incarcerated in the nation. So to have that be a county seal will only bring a lot of reaction and problem. Now, I want to turn that around real quick. This picture right here, turn it to the audience also. This picture right here, this gentleman right here is George Carteret. George Carteret, George D. Carteret. He dropped the D. because he didn't like the French perspective. George D. Carteret was appointed by the king, King Charles, King somebody, to come here to, with the settlers, to establish a settlement in the Elizabeth Town. He then appointed Philip Carteret, who became the first governor, and then named after his own cousin that he married, Carteret did. Now, Carteret is a vicious slime. He brought over 300 slaves here. He was a consultant and a major investor in slavery in New Jersey. So he's nothing to be proud of. The other picture is a picture of a burnt man at the stake. My mom and my dad, born and raised in Mississippi, told me about this. Just right here, and this is how they treated people. They would burn them to a crisp, to the point that they even break off parts of their bodies, and some even accepted them as souvenirs. I didn't make this story up. These are facts. So I wanted to share that with the county. And I kind of, you know, side with you guys who live on the seal. It's very important for our children, and our children's children, to understand the history of this country, the history of slavery, and the impact. There's two pieces of legislature right now in the Senate and Assembly now dealing with the possibility of research and the possibility of reparations. I just left a meeting, a conference with the National Action Network on the leadership of Reverend Al Sharpton, and the discussion there, big discussions about what Florida is doing and how they're doing everything to shut down black history. And then I'll come to this county and you being resistant on even the possibility of it. So again, we will be back again. I'm going to present to the county clerk here for a copy of, this is a fact sheet of 33 different points of instance of slavery and its impact, and all the cast of characters that related to this. Even some evidence, and we're going to get into the evidence of factual evidence, that not only this happened, which you already agreed to, but all the entities involved, including the justice system at that time, which is Essex County, Union County, wherever it was at that time, those sheriff, the sheriff, Chetwood is one of the names that was mentioned. And I'm going to close out with this. Be respectful of these people and their argument of the seal because they have a right of history that has definitely been embroiled in this county. You have a responsibility to not make this such a political issue, but make it an issue that's going to impact the study and understanding of this country and all its history, including the enslavement of our people. Thank you very much. I'll present this for the record for you guys to have a talk. Thank you very much.
Good evening. My name is Barbara Lamort. I've been a resident of Union for 68 years. Congratulations to the representatives of the 1741 Project on achieving your goal and educating many of our county residents on a previously little-known chapter of American history that you have brought to light. Commissioners, I respectfully request that each of you state individually your position on retaining or replacing the existing Union County Seal. The online voting about the seal reminds the objective observer of an election in a communist country. Yes, the citizens may cast their ballots, however, the outcome is predetermined by the party. Had it been a sincere effort on the part of this Board to ascertain the opinion of the 600,000 residents of our county, a third option of leaving the current seal in place would have been offered. Does the public know that Elizabeth Mayor Bullwedge, the Township Committee of Union, and Senator Cryon, and other Democratic public officials believe, as we do, that the 1933 official seal should continue to represent our county? And we have 1,853 signatures as of 6:00 PM tonight on the option that was omitted from the county's vote, saving our seal as it is. In the interest of full transparency, why wasn't the public informed of the thought process that went into this push to have a new seal when it originated in 2020? We only found out about it in December of 2022. One objection to the current seal is that it is triggering, pun intended, but what about option one for the new seal showing a plane aimed for a tower? That evokes a plane flying into a tall building reminiscent of 9/11, which was and is still traumatizing to Union County residents. The plane also reminds Elizabeth residents of three plane crashes that happened in the city in the early 1950s, memorialized in Judy Bloom's 2015 book, In the Unlikely Event. Plus, the airport and seaport depicted in the left top quadrant are Newark Airport and Port Newark. Yes, some of the territory of those two are in Elizabeth in Union County, but who knows that? In addition, the tall building in the upper right quadrant of option one and the only image in option two is the courthouse, which houses New Jersey State Courts. The only county offices in that building are the county clerks and the surrogates. All the Commissioners' offices and the county departments and staff are in the lower buildings, which are not the focus of either image and which are actually across the plaza complex from the tower where we are right now. Is the change for the purpose of being PC? Then I suggest that you read a book called Apostles of Disunion by Charles Dew, which talks about state-appointed commissioners who traveled through the South in 1860 and 1861 urging uncommitted slave states to join in succession and form a new Southern Nation. Some of these commissioners traveled as far as Canada to foment plans to kill Lincoln and cause dissent and rebellion. History, warts and all, must be preserved for future generations so that they don't repeat the mistakes, but also so that they can be proud of the good that has been achieved by their forefathers and foremothers. Let Hannah James and baby John rest in peace in the cemetery adjacent to the courthouse property and adjacent to the other, on the other side, to the school building that is now referred to as Snyder Academy, where Alexander Hamilton was once a student. Also adjacent to the Presbyterian Church of Elizabeth. Also, we could make hay with heritage tourism collaborating with Caldwell Parsonage, the site depicted on the seal, Boxwood Hall. site depicted on the seal, Boxwood Hall, the home of Elias Budino, who adopted one of Caldwell's orphans, Liberty Hall, the home of New Jersey's first elected governor, William Livingston, who was a member of Caldwell's congregation, and the two sites of the Elizabeth Historical Society. Thank you.
My name is Jamie Levine. I am a councilperson in Summit. Thank you for all you do. I'm here to say how excited I am, and all of us are in Summit, that work has begun early on Bryant Pond and the rehabilitative efforts there. So I wanted to say, give some kudos to your Department of Parks and Rec and your engineers for getting that work done. So thank you. Good evening.
My name is Charles Schalcross. I am vice president of the Union County Historical Society, former president, and I thank you for the opportunity. Commissioner Leon, you probably have not heard so much history since you were a student in my class at Batten. So it's going to be on the midterm. I would ask the chairman one basic question. I have three points. One basic question, which we haven't as yet received the courtesy of an answer. We have been allowed to vote on the two proposed seals, but have not been given a third choice, namely to vote to keep the current seal. I wish someone could explain why. We haven't heard an answer to this. I'll wait. That's my answer. When I spoke last week, I cited the tearing down of statues, changing of names, et cetera, as a disturbing trend in recent years. I was reminded by, I believe, Commissioner Williams, that the statues were of Robert E. Lee. Well, however, others honoring Thomas Jefferson, Christopher Columbus, Teddy Roosevelt, and George Washington, and for some reason Kit Carson, I don't know why, have been removed. Yes, they were all not perfect individuals, of course not, but they're part of our history. So let's not jump on this dangerous bandwagon. And number three, the petition to save our seal has been signed by more than one thousand eight hundred people so far. That is not an insignificant number. Are they also to be ignored? Just a reminder, November is not far away. Thank you.
Good evening, board members. Give an honor to God, to board members, to all that is in attendance on here on this evening. I would like to greet you and just say hello and good evening. I also want to start out by saying that I commend everyone who is here on tonight, who is passionate and is standing up for your cause and for what you believe in. I would be remiss not to say anything on tonight. I was feeling a little tired, a little sick of my body today, but I would be remiss to not say a word toward the cause. But I would like to start off with a quote by John Donae, who says, "Any man's death diminishes me because I am involved in mankind. Therefore, never sin for whom the bell tolls. The bell tolls for thee." And I would like to start off that saying that because of our cause, that even though we're not intricately involved with this particular issue, that we are a part of humanity, and that because of the injustice that was done to this particular individual, although it was hundreds of years ago, again, as I had spoken last week, it has not been resolved yet. Let me tell you about looking back and looking forward. You know, there's a Bible scripture where there was a man who was married, they don't mention the wife's name, but they call him Lot's wife. And the story talks about Lot who was fleeing from the city, because the city was going to be stoned with fire and brimstone. And the commandment that Lot gave his wife was not to look back, not to look back. And I believe that the significance of him telling her not to look back was so that she would not dwell on the situations that caused them to flee in the beginning. But of course, she was hard-headed. I'm going to be short, see if you guys can hear it. He told her not to look back, and when she looked back, we all know the story that she turned into what? A pillar of stone. So sometimes it's good not to look back at the injustices, but to move forward with what God is trying to provide and to present to us today. You know, I always say that, I always say that it's not what you know that makes a whole new world, it's what you don't know that makes a whole new world. So I believe that it is up to us today to make a decision to make injustices right, that we make the wrongs right, and that we make a decision to present the monument for the slave that was burned at the stake, not as a pillar to remember or to forget, but a pillar to remember, so that, again, we won't make the same mistakes again twice. So it's up to us to move forward, to make this move for future generations, so they can see not only where we came from, but how far we have advanced. That's all I have to say on tonight.
Excuse me, sir? The clerk just needs your name and town for the right word.
My name is Reverend Clyde Dunning.
You know my name, right? Maria Ettravaria? Okay. Elizabeth. All right, so I'm going to go over a few resolutions. Okay? Three five five, three five six. Now, my understanding, because this is for the VAWA and, you know, Victims of Crime Act, but I have a question regarding things of this nature. Why is it that the prosecutor's office is not open to the public? Why is that the victim witness unit isn't open? You go over there, and there's a sign on the door that you can't get in. You have to call, like, and no one picks up their phone calls, or no one returns people's phone calls. Can you elaborate on three five six? I mean, three six five? Okay. And then this one, three seven two. Okay? Organ donating. Okay? A lot of places were having it where you had to be vaccinated in order to get your organ donation. Okay? And that came from both the donor and the recipient. Now, does this county do things in that same manner, where you have to be vaccinated, show your vax card in order, like, if you needed a kidney or something like that? Okay? That's one. And then, and I come across things of where, let's say you are a donor, okay? And now you land yourself in the hospital. They're not going to look out for you and do the best they can for you, because they know you're a donation, an organ donor. I've heard of all that. Nope, nope. There's people that had to go to Texas to another state, because...
Please don't spread misinformation.
No, that's not, no, 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 no. That's not misinformation. Okay? You, okay, perfect example. Two countries, including the United States, are the only two countries that can do advertisements regarding medications and stuff like that. Okay? Is it misinformation that vaccine makers are held liable free? Like, they're not held liable for any vaccine injury? Is that misinformation too? I didn't think so.
I don't know what you're talking about.
Okay, yeah. Okay, yeah. Because I'm on my time. I didn't interrupt anybody else's time.
I apologize.
So, yeah. Because those stories do come out there. I guess nobody ever saw things from back in a long time ago. Okay? Because there are such things as organ harvesting. Okay? And it happens all the time. It happens all the time. Okay? It happens all the time. Okay? It's easier to ship ahead of a human heart than ahead of lettuce over a plane. And that was something I came across a long time ago. Okay? Don't think those things don't happen. Okay? And then for, oh, and make sure that everything gets responded to, whatever I was saying, because last time, a lot of things got swept under, like, nobody really gave an answer. And then for three four, three seven four. Who is that for? When does that start, or any of that? Because there are a lot of people out there that could benefit from that. Thank you.
Chairman, I just want to say I'm a proud organ donor. I also believe in the integrity of our healthcare system, that there is no danger in the organs.
In reference to three sixty-five, Assistant Director Dinsmore.
Good evening again. Resolution three sixty-five, the purpose of this resolution is to change account numbers only. The services continue their comprehensive career support services at the American Job Center. We are changing the account number from twenty twenty-one grant year to twenty twenty-two.
Thank you very much, Assistant Director. In reference to number three seventy-four, the board is recognizing April thirtieth as National Therapy Animal Day. It's a recognition. In reference to number three fifty-five, three fifty-six. First, it's Prosecutor Tanzi, please.
I would just like to say that, yes, our building is a sensitive area, and if you come to our building, you can't just walk in, you have to go through metal detectors.
He's responding back to your question, ma'am.
The door has an intercom button that you can push. The security guard is right at the desk, can allow you into the building, but it's a sensitive area, it's the prosecutor's office, so we don't allow people to just walk in. As far as our victim witness program goes, it's a very busy unit, unfortunately. Unfortunately, they're very busy, they're dedicated people, they're wonderful people that work in that unit. That's an emergent issue. You make an appointment if you want to see someone there, and that's very easy to do. Our people are responsive, and anytime you need an appointment, you can get one relatively quickly as well. I also want to just say that my sister was the recipient of a donated kidney in the state of New Jersey, which saved her life. So, thank you very much.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the commissioner board, and Dr. Garrettson. This is Bruce Patterson, Garwood, New Jersey. Rezo three forty-four is adding a hundred and sixty-four thousand for administrative staffing to an existing hundred and seventy thousand contract for Center for Family Guidance. And I thank Commissioner Baker for asking the question about it. But I'm still confused, because you're saying there's two retirements, and you're hiring one person, and yet you're adding a hundred and sixty-four thousand. It sounds like it really should be a deduct, not an add. Rezo three forty-eight is for approval to exceed the county tax limit and establish a cap bank. The questions are, are we now exceeding the tax levy limit, and if so, by how much? Also, why continue with the cap bank? It's unnecessary, since you are sitting on around a hundred and fifty million dollars in free cash. I'll have to check the books that were handed out. Both items, if instituted, means you can tax the residents more, which is considered poor governance. Rezo three forty-nine is introducing the year twenty twenty-three Union County budget. Last meeting, I noted two commissioners. Get out of, boys. One more of the Halley's Comet type, as he noted. I attended the three budget hearings, lots of expenditure, some savings. To Commissioner Baker, he has been top since he has been elected, always asking good questions and eliciting information, like just previously I mentioned. To Commissioner Maribella, yeah, I know you want to hear this.
Twice in a row?
You're all ears. Over the many years of attendance, basically, not one freeholder ever asks why this year's departmental budget request is so much higher than the previous year's expenditure. This has always been something that jumped out to me and had to figure into all that surplus that is carried every year. Thank you for asking the one question that needed to be asked. In fact, after your question, it may have sent a chill down some directors' spines, and many of them subsequently volunteered why their budgets are so much higher than the past expenditure. At the budget schedule meeting next month, I'll have additional comments. Rezo three fifty-five and three fifty-six are accepting federal grant funding. One is four hundred and forty-six thousand with a hundred and eleven thousand in county match, and the other is thirty-four thousand with eleven thousand county match. And question, I'm not questioning these grants themselves, but I want to point out that so many of the grants you receive are based on only twenty-five percent county money match. Yet, when you give out grants to the towns, you demand they match fifty percent. So why don't you decrease your fifty percent match requirements to twenty-five percent, like the feds do to you? The towns, to get your grants, then must increase their residence taxes even more for the match. This is pure folly. Rezo three sixty is signing the prosecutor's office, yes, those words were left out for some reason, a new one, is signing the prosecutor's office collective bargaining agreement from twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-four. And my question is, how many employees does this affect? And just an overview of the bargaining agreement, such as changes in salaries, steps and benefits. Rezo three sixty-four is a residency waiver request, and I'm just wondering why, and why not in-county hiring. Three sixty-seven, three sixty-eight is for audit services and procurement of solar energy. And I just need a little more explanation on that. I'm just, what happened to the previous company? I think it was Ticonderoga or somebody like that. As to general comments, and this will be to the county sealed debate. These two designs, looking at them, remind me of casino poker chips, fat borders, cramped center space, it's just not right. Plus, the unanswered question from last meeting was who or what company came up with these designs, since they may not be from the county, and they don't reflect the counties appropriately? And I agree with Clerk Rajapi one hundred percent on this item. And did it cost taxpayer money, as some people ask? As chair, you should be transparent as possible on these serious questions. Finally, we should keep in mind that there are about fifty historical war sites in our county alone, so our seal should be historically heavy. There is one more question about Boxwood Hall. You're celebrating the eightieth anniversary, and Boxwood Hall is about two hundred and fifty years old, so I was just wondering why the eightieth number. Thank you very much.
Carlos Santos from Mountainside. My issue is the seal. I didn't prepare tonight, anything tonight, because obviously the two thousand signatures that people have gotten, and you've gotten, you know, their voices don't matter. Because I gave last, at the last meeting thirteen days ago, I said, well, why don't you put it up on the website and give us an option for the three choices? You know, that way we could vote for it. No, nothing was done thirteen days later, you know? The other thing is, I agree with the one woman, that we would like to hear everybody's, where they stand on this issue with the seal. And then my last thing, and I'll leave it alone, is if it's such a major deal that you can't give us a choice now, put it on the ballot in November, let the residents decide. Thank you.
My name is Kelly Comar. I'm from Roselle. I wanted to speak a little bit about the Union County seal, but first I'd like to thank you for teaching me a part of the county history I did not know previously about.
You're welcome.
As everyone has mentioned, the petition for the seal is up to over eighteen hundred signatures. You guys are killing my printer.[1799.13] We've got forty pages of signatures here. And I just wanted to ask a quick question. Did anybody between the last meeting and this one go online and look at the comments under the county's posts about the seal poll? Show hands? So, that brings me to the next question. How are you connected to us? If we are speaking and no one is listening, how are you connected? I also printed out the comments under the poll, if anyone would like to look at those. I also have a question about last meeting, I believe it was Commissioner Kowalski, mentioned that changing the seal was brought up twenty years ago. If that was an issue twenty years ago, then why in two thousand and eleven did you try to copyright the seal? And why was there a lawsuit which ended up costing the county forty thousand dollars in place about the copyrighted seal? Everyone's talking about remembering Hannah and how to do it properly. The DAR, Darrows and American Revolution, their medal with Hannah Caldwell shows her inside the house with a British soldier outside the window taking aim to shoot her. Their medal, which commemorates her, also shows her death. So, why can't our seal? Last meeting, there was a lot of, we don't like the murder. Well, we are the residents of Union County. Listen to our voices. At least give us a vote and a say. We deserve that much. I just wanted to read a quick excerpt. It's from Part Taken by Women in American History. And it talks about Hannah Caldwell, and the ending line particularly, I thought, was resonate with us here. "It seems particularly sad that such an end should have been the fate of a woman known as Hannah Caldwell, known for her belevinence, serenity, and sweetness of disposition. But the memory of this martyr to the American liberty will long be revered by the inhabitants of the land with whose soil her blood is mingled." That's us. This is our land. That's where her soil, her blood is mingled with our soil. We should honor her and remember her accordingly. When it brought up at a meeting, I believe Commissioner Kowalski, again, you said with another state or county, and they said, oh, you're the county with the murder on the seal? No, we are the county with the martyr on the seal. This is a moment to remember, reflect, and teach. That seal is a teaching point in so many ways. You can teach about Hannah, you can teach about the Revolutionary War, you can teach about the people coming together, united in one cause. It shows a willingness of the people of Union County then and now to protect our homes and families. It shows what a group of people can accomplish when we unite together under one cause. Thank you.
I'm Mark Hurwith, Springfield, New Jersey. I feel I didn't get a chance to finish my statement two weeks ago, so I'm back. And I want to clearly state that Hannah Caldwell's martyrdom during the Battle of Connecticut Farms on June seventh, seventeen eighty, contributed directly to American history and therefore world history. Hannah Caldwell's death helped turn the tide of battle when the American Revolution stood at the brink of failure. One woman's life made the difference between victory and defeat during the final invasion of New Jersey in June seventeen eighty. During the fighting at Connecticut Farms, Hannah Caldwell, the wife of Reverend James Caldwell, who was called the Rebel High Priest, was killed in her own home protecting her children. With her murder, she becomes New Jersey's Jane McCray. Her husband spent the following days after the battle making sure all of New Jersey knew of it. If the Crown forces could kill the pastor's wife, the mother of nine children, who was safe? This propaganda victory turned Hannah's death into a rallying point for the citizen soldiers of New Jersey militia, who were defending their families and home and stiffened and resolved the long-suffering professionals of the Continentals. So, on June twenty-third, seventeen eighty, the climactic battle of the final invasion was fought in Springfield. And the British failed when they were stopped by General Green with a force of approximately two thousand Continentals and New Jersey militia against six thousand of the enemy. Stopped at Springfield upon the withdrawal of British forces, the town was burned to the ground like Connecticut Farms. But the British never returned in force to attempt to retake New Jersey for the rest of the war. A matter of fact, no foreign invader has put boots on the ground of New Jersey since seventeen eighty. So, how did Hannah Caldwell's sacrifice make a direct connection between the battles of Connecticut Farm and Springfield and Washington and Rochambeau's march to victory at Yorktown the next year in seventeen eighty-one? Well, here's two points, and I want you to remember this. The critical year of seventeen eighty, if Clinton and Kniphausen had been able to deliver the knockout blow to the rebellion, which they may well have, when General Rochambeau sailed into Newport, Rhode Island eighteen days after the battle of Springfield on July eleventh, seventeen eighty, the war may have ended before French assistance with their boots on the ground tipped the scales in our favor. Rochambeau may have gotten back on his ships and gone home to France. More importantly, in seventeen eighty-one, the Crown forces should have attacked Washington and Rochambeau's armies while they were marching through New Jersey, as Washington had done to Clinton at the Battle of Monmouth in seventeen seventy-eight. However, Clinton well-remembered the hornet's nest of the New Jersey militia and sat in New York City instead of attacking. Therefore, Hannah Caldwell's death changed the course of American history, just as Jane McCray's did before Saratoga. Without her martyrdom, there may have not been a United States of America. Let me say that again. Without her martyrdom, there may have not been a United States of America. And without a United States of America, what would world history be today? World history was changed here in Union County. So, as we gather here only yards away from Hannah and Reverend Caldwell's graves, I beg you, please, do not take Hannah Caldwell's sacrifice off the county seal or reduce her likeness to obscurity. Thank you.
Ronald Martin, Slenden, New Jersey. Regarding the seal, that seal is unique and thought-provoking. I say unique, because the ones that have been proposed are kind of, they kind of look like everybody else's seal. Ours is unique, should be preserved. I say thought-provoking, because years ago, I was walking through Union with my friend Jim, and we passed that site. And he told me, you know, that's, take a look at the county seal, that's what inspired it. And that inspired me to, you know, do a little research and learn that story. So, rather than tinker with something which we should all, it's history, you know, leave it alone. I have a proposal where you guys could do something that would be much more meaningful for your residents. There are, there's a dormant railroad line that runs from the Bayway Refinery through Lyndon, Roselle, into Cranford. It ends near the Woodmont, the new Woodmont Apartments on South Ave. That could be a walking trail, a multi-use trail. Middlesex County has the Middlesex Greenway. I think Essex and Hudson are working on the, on the Essex-Hudson, I forget what they call it, a greenway, also dormant railroad tracks. Monmouth County has the Henry Hudson Trail. These are all dormant railroad tracks, just like we have here in Union County. So, rather than tinker with that, which doesn't, which is fine the way it is, take a look at those tracks. I think it's owned by the Staten Island Railroad. Hasn't been a train on it since maybe Nixon was in office. And look into creating a walking path. Middlesex County built a bridge over Route One for their, for their greenway. You know, this would maybe take a bridge over St. George Ave, some great improvements, but I think that would be much more worthy of your attention than, you know, a new seal. It ain't broke, don't fix it. Thank you.
Sir, about that railroad line, the part, I guess, to the right of St. George Avenue, Conrail still feels is active, but we have had conversations about the Roselle side of St. George about that length. But Conrail owns and operates it or has rights, so it's a long process, but we did have conversations with them. They're ongoing.
Sorry, sir.
May I clarify one point? Everyone has spoken, so.
Sorry, sir.
May I clarify one point?
Sorry.
That was made by the gentleman about Boxwood Hall, about the age of Boxwood Hall.
Sir.
It was declared a national historical site in nineteen thirty-eight. It's much older than that, but that's the origin of it.
Sir, I'm asking politely, you had your five minutes to speak.
Yes, but everyone has spoken.
We're not going to set new precedent, okay?
Yeah, I'd like to.
Because whatever, resident follows the same rules. If there's five minutes to speak, that's it. Thank you for your information.
Thank you very much. So, it goes back farther than eighty years.
Sir, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Sir, much like your classroom, there are rules. You have five minutes of time to speak. Everybody just can't come as many times as they want. I understand, but a rule is a rule.
Seeing no one else, I formally close this portion of the meeting and ask for a motion to adopt resolutions two thousand twenty-three dash three three nine through two thousand twenty-three dash three seven four.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Motion is. Oh, sorry.
I got you back, Mr. Patterson.
Sorry.
Again to your questions.
Chair, excuse me, Chair, could I just, relating to Mr. Shawcross's point, I think we should have said celebrating, for number three six nine, celebrating its eightieth anniversary as a national historical site. I think that was inadvertently admitted from the reso description.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Chairman, I could make, you know, Chairman, I could make that change to the resolution body and then recirculate for signature, so that it reflects Commissioner Kowalski's comments.
Thank you. So, we're going to go to number three forty-four. Assistant Director Dinsmore?
Thank you. Resolution three forty-four, as I stated before, is an amendment to an existing contract. When we envisioned the initial contract, we procured for the services of administrator only. Due to some retirements by county staff, and given our excellent relationship with this vendor, we have chosen to increase the contract to recruit up to two additional positions in the nurse administrator area.
Thank you very much, Assistant Director. Number three forty-eight, three forty-nine, Director Taylor?
Through you, Chairman. Resolution two thousand twenty-three dash three forty-eight is essentially a state caption that essentially says exceeding the county tax levy and to establish a cap bank. That deals with the nineteen seventy-seven cap, just to advise members of the public and the commission, we are not subject to the nineteen seventy-seven cap in the two thousand twenty-three budget. We are actually subject to the two thousand ten cap. And under both caps, we are under both caps, and we are not utilizing the COLA. We're actually banking the COLA, and it is essentially a financial planning tool. We are banking all of the two point six million dollars, and it is important to note that we have not utilized the bank in two thousand twenty-one or two thousand twenty-two. And as previously mentioned, this is the fourth year that we have a zero, and the reason that we adopt the COLA is for financial planning in subsequent years, and if it is needed, even though we have not utilized it, it is there for use.
Thank you, Director. Number three sixteen, Director Scatari? Reference to three fifty-five, three fifty-six?
No, I think the question was in reference to two thousand twenty-three, three sixty, the collective bargaining agreement. The IBW is the International Brotherhood of Electrical Workers. Our, much of our clerical staff is, are members of that union. I don't know how that ever happened. They're not electrical workers, but they're clericals. This is, this resolution is authorizing signing the agreement that the county worked out with our employees. I don't know the full, all the benefits of the agreement or the, but I know, I think it was, I think they got.
Director Scatari could assist with that. With the language of the agreement.
I believe they got two percent raises for each of the years. And it goes back to two thousand twenty-two, because they were working without a contract since January of two thousand twenty-two. So, it's a retroactive contract.
Yeah, there was one other question. The number of employees for two thousand twenty-two was thirty-nine, and for two thousand twenty-three currently is forty-four, and is correct, two percent across the board for all three years.
Thank you very much, both of you. For three sixty-four, Deputy County Manager Wagner?
Through you, Chair. This individual was an employee, she was a county resident when she was hired. She's experiencing a family hardship that is requiring her to move to another county. She's a very highly valued employee. We're very happy to have her on staff and feel that it is a wise decision to allow her to take care of this family situation.
Thank you very much, Deputy County Manager. Three sixty-seven, three sixty-eight, County Council, Bergen?
Thank you, Chairman. First, to correct one thing, the question, we do not currently have a solar power consultant or running any kind of solar power program at this time. These two resolutions are merely preliminary to the county beginning the process of looking into solar power for some of our facilities. It does not spend any money. It merely authorizes the process to begin. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, County Council. So, now, for a second time, we went through a couple twos today. We have a motion to adopt resolutions two thousand twenty-three dash three three nine through two thousand twenty-three dash three seven four.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Motion is made by Commissioner Maribella, seconded by Commissioner Kowalski. The board, please call the roll.
Commissioner Baker?
Aye.
Commissioner Bodak? Commissioner Garrettson? Commissioner Kowalski?
Yes.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Maribella?
Aye.
Commissioner Williams?
Aye.
Vice Chairwoman Palmieri-Mooded?
Aye.
And Chairman Granados?
Aye.
Chairman, you have nine votes in the affirmative on all resolutions?
Thank you very much. We'll move on to Commissioner comments. We'll start to my right today. Commissioner Dr. Angela Garrettson? Oh, keep the first, keep the first.
No, I'll hold my comments, because I didn't get to hear my colleagues speak last time, so if you don't mind, I'll wait.
Okay. Commissioner Bodak?
Sure. I would like to make sure everyone is aware of ongoing Union County programs that serve hundreds of residents each month. Our ASK program is a series of community visits for seniors and caregivers, bringing staff from our Division of Aging out to local libraries and community centers every month. Our drop-off recycling program for document shredding, scrap metal, and household hazardous waste will also be available monthly throughout the spring, summer, and fall. Also, our Fresh Start Mobile program is continuing to bring basic services to those in Union County community who need assistance. And our COVID-nineteen vaccination and testing clinics are still available. We continue to encourage everyone to get vaccinated and help prevent the spread of the virus. Please note that our clinic schedule will be changing in May. You can visit online at ucnj.org for more information on all of these programs. That concludes my remarks, sir.
Good evening, everyone. In recognition of Arbor Day two thousand twenty-three, the Union County Board of Count.
In recognition of Arbor Day Twenty Twenty-three, the Union County Board of County Commissioners is looking forward to hearing the voices of young people so, in our community, so we have held a contest as in previous years. This contest is held to encourage environmental stewardship and tree conservation among students in grades four through eight in partnership with the Union County Shake Tree Advisory Board. There will be an award ceremony presentation for the winners at our next public meeting on Thursday, April twenty-seventh, and we will be awarding students from the fourth, fifth, sixth, seventh, and eighth grade first, second, and third prizes. Arbor Day has been a national observance since eighteen seventy-two. It started in Nebraska and is something that is happening right now internationally. We encourage the public to plant and care for trees. This year it will be celebrated on Friday, April twenty-eighth. If anyone wants more information about our Arbor Day poetry contest, please contact Madeline Brigantino at mbrigantino@ucnj.org or nine oh eight seven eight nine three six five three. And there's many links on our county website. Thank you and have a good evening, all.
Thank you, Commissioner Leon. Commissioner Kowalski?
Thank you, Chairman. I, I want to thank people for coming to address us again tonight. I feel that at a meeting where we have both poetry from, by John Donne, as the Reverend brought to us, and the history lessons from some of our local historians is a good lesson for all of us and enriches us. I don't know what we're going to do about the seal. I think Ms. Colmar, just because we didn't answer you about looking at the petition, I think I would, I would not be surprised if most of the commissioners here looked at the petition. We do want to find out what is being said about the seal and about Union County history. So we'll, we'll keep listening and we'll be talking more, I'm sure. I have some information about electric vehicle ownership in Union County. Well, I'm the representative to the North Jersey Transportation Planning Authority and we, Union County with the NJTPA had sponsored a study about electrical vehicles in the county and it's looking for how we're going to be locating charging stations over the next ten years. And to get more public input on this, we have scheduled a Zoom meeting on Tuesday, April twenty-fifth at six-thirty PM. So we encourage you to, to go to the Zoom meeting. You can get, sign up through the, the, our website, wwwucnj.org/eb-study. Anyway, just go to ucnj.org. It's got information about it. And the state has set a goal for December Twenty Twenty-five to have three hundred thirty thousand registered passenger electric vehicles and at least four hundred public fast chargers throughout the state. And the chargers are to be put in no fewer than two hundred locations. So our next part of the study is focusing on Level Two and Level Three DCFC chargers, which would be publicly accessible. So our project manager, Liza Betz, can be reached at ebez@ucnj.org. That's E-B-E-T-Z. So we're trying to keep up with technology. It's always a challenge, but we really want to look forward and, and not, not be left behind on this. Last week, I forgot to mention that the Falcon camera is available for people to have a look at. That's also at ucnj.org. The Falcon has laid four eggs this year. We are hoping that all of them will hatch and be healthy. So it's not something you want to watch for a lengthy period of time, sometimes, if the Falcon is just sitting there, it's not always that interesting. But there's, there are moments when the, the mama and Papa Falcon are together and interacting and you can see what's going on in the little Falcon igloo we have on top of the courthouse. So that's it for my comments, Chair. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Kowalski. Commissioner Baker?
Thank you, Chair. My comments have to do with notary republic, notary public training. There's a limited number of seats that are still available for the upcoming notary public training seminar hosted by Union County Clerk Joanne Rajapi at the John H. Stammler Police Academy in Scotch Plains on Friday, Friday morning, May the twelfth. Registration is required in advance in order to attend. A registration fee of ten dollars applies. The registration form and payment instructions are available for, available for download Attendees should also note that the dress code at the John H. Stammler, or John J. Stammler, excuse me, John J. Stammler Police Academy is strictly enforced. Business casual is recommended. Jeans and sneakers are not permitted and men must wear shirts with collars. For questions about the notary seminar event, contact Anna Lima in the office of the county clerk at nine oh eight five two seven four seven eight seven. And that concludes my comments. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Baker. Commissioner Mirabella?
Yeah, thank, thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Not everyone knows this, but I know that this is National Poetry Month and the Union County Board of County Commissioners is pleased to present a talk by Pulitzer Prize-winning journalist and poet Tina Kelly on the intersection of journalism and poetry. The event will take place at the Pat Coran Cultural Center at the Carriage House at one thirty-five Watson Road in Fanwood on Tuesday, April eighteenth, from seven o'clock to eight o'clock at night. The event is free of charge, but pre-registration is required online at ucnj.org/tina kelly23. Ms. Kelly, career in journalism, spent New York Times, The Star-Ledger, The New Jersey Monthly Magazine, among others, and she was awarded the Pulitzer Prize for covering the terrorist attacks on September eleventh, two thousand and one. Launched by the Academy of American Poets in April of nineteen ninety-six, National Poetry Month has become the largest literary celebration in the world with tens of millions of readers, students, K-12 teachers, librarians, booksellers, and others making poetry's important place in our lives. The National Poetry Registered Program is presented by the Office of Cultural and Heritage here at the county, a division of Parks and Recreation made possible by funds of the New Jersey State Council on the Arts. So please, if you have interest in poetry, as I do, please plan to be there on April eighteenth. Couple other comments, Mr. Chairman. I'm very proud of the work that this board has done to present for the fourth year of zero increase. I really want to compliment Fiscal Chair Palmieri-Mooded for her work and leadership in this area, County Manager Oatman, Finance Director Taylor, and all the directors who contributed to this great result, all while maintaining a triple-A bond rating. It's not to be underestimated how important that is to this county. It proves a good management and financial strength of our county and to be able to deliver four years in a row is remarkable and great leadership by our county manager. I did enjoy the comment on, I call it rails to trails, that the gentleman brought up. I guess he's from Linden. And I liked that idea and there's been a lot of communication at the county, as the county manager mentioned, to try to find a way to do that. But that's a real good way to repurpose those old rail lines and I'm a big advocate of trying to find a way to make that happen. So I'm glad that you decided to comment on that. I made comments last time on the seal and made my point clear that I'm not in favor of changing the seal. I think it's just fine the way it is and for all the reasons kind of stated and probably more, I'm not, I'm not in favor. My colleagues are well aware of my position on that and, you know, hopefully we'll find a, a way to navigate this, this seal issue moving, moving forward that can at least, at least provide people with some voice in this matter. And I know that the young woman who brought up organ donation left and I, and I do apologize for my, I'll call it an outburst of commenting at a turn. She's right, it was her time, but I just couldn't let that kind of misinformation be freely spoken. It's really disservice to people that are willing to be organ donors and I don't want it in any way to, for that kind of misinformation to lead someone to the position of not considering that as an option for, for use of others of their organs when they don't need them anymore. And, you know, that is, I just couldn't let it go. I wish she was here to hear my full explanation of, of my comments, but it's patently untrue that, you know, you don't get proper medical care if you're an organ donor. That is untrue. And I hope people will consider, as the chairman mentioned and Commissioner Williams in our presentation to the, the, the gang up in New Providence who do such a great job of organ donation, I, I hope people will consider it and clear up any misinformation that's falsely being spread. Mr. Chairman, that concludes my comments.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Mirabella. Commissioner Williams?
Thank you, Chairman. So I have a couple of things. One is I thought that I had made my position clear last week when I provided my opinion. I also thank everyone for expressing their opinion. So here's mine. You know, one of the things that I don't think is helpful to these conversations is a sort of overblown rhetoric and dire predictions that history will end if this seal is changed. I think that's ridiculous. History will not die. Caldwell parsonage will still be there. All of the thirty-plus historic sites in Union County will be there. The battlefields all over the state will still be there. I don't like this seal and I thought I made that clear last week, so my position has not changed. I don't like it the same way that, you know, if I go to Washington DC to look at the MLK Memorial and statue, I'm not expecting and I would not want to see, you know, Dr. King lying in a pool of his own blood and, you know, at a Memphis motel balcony. I wouldn't like to see President Kennedy, you know, with his brains splattered all over his wife's lap. I don't like to see those kinds of representations and this, albeit, you know, sort of a cartoonish image, you know, I don't think, I think that there's a way we can look forward. It doesn't mean that we're not also looking back. This is a history state. So history's not going to disappear if the county makes a decision to change a seal, to move forward. If we want to talk about this has changed the course of history, you know, slavery changed the course of history. The massacre of Native American people, the genocide of indigenous people made this country. Slavery built this country. The bloody backs, the lynchings, et cetera, and beatings of black people over, you know, over the past four hundred years, that is what made this country. So if we're going to put a quadrant seal and we're going to have those images on it along with Hannah Caldwell, then maybe you have a point. You know, someone made a point about, you know, other statues being taken down. Yes, Robert E. Lee statues should be taken down. Those statues were not honoring anything except white supremacy. Those statues came up in the twentieth century, okay? As part of the so-called lost cause. Those statues were not after the Civil War. With regard to Thomas Jefferson, you know, Thomas Jefferson suggested that black women copulated with apes. So I'm not averse to not seeing statues of Thomas Jefferson, okay? So, you know, when you think about your position and you think about what kind of history is being erased and what kind of history should be taught, I think that those are very important points that people should keep in mind. Changing a seal, moving forward, and making changes to a seal, the, the one that I favored is the quadrant, which does, of course, still acknowledge and recognize Hannah Caldwell. I think that that would be fine. The, the, I felt it was kind of, I felt it was kind of disingenuous to suggest that, you know, perhaps the image of the airplane near the courthouse was somehow deliberate. I didn't notice that particular reference, but that can easily be changed. It's a quadrant. It can be moved to another space so as to not, you know, trigger or whatever, you know, folks may be sensitive about, and I respect that too. I did not see it that way. So, you know, that's, those are kind of my, my comments on that. I think that, you know, we can honor history and I think that that quadrant does honor history, it honors industry and so forth. So that's, that's my opinion, but to suggest that I am anti-history or we are anti-history because we have a disagreement about a county seal, I think that's, that's ridiculous, in my opinion. And you could quote me on that. So that's what I think, Chairman. Thank you, Chairman. I do have one other thing, just kind of shifting gears here. We are having an event tomorrow, Friday, April fourteenth, at Kane University. It's a film-ready workshop and our, our commissioner board invites everyone to participate, municipalities, including police and fire departments. This is a certification and marketing initiative of the New Jersey State Motion Picture and Television Commission in partnership with our commissioner board and our Union County Motion Picture and Television Advisory Board, which I also sit on. So we'll have representatives from all twenty-one of our municipalities here, along with Bergen County, Essex County, Hudson, and Passaic Counties. So we established this Union County Motion Picture and Television Advisory Board, I'll just call it the advisory board. And with the launch of Film Ready, we have an even bigger tool to help us attract and welcome these productions to our communities. The program tomorrow is a five-step certification and marketing program that enables the cities and towns here in Union County to effectively accommodate on-location filming and to market their communities as filming destinations. So this workshop tomorrow is the first step toward that certification. At the workshops, those who attend will learn about the economic benefits of hosting on-location filming, training, and guidance will be provided by industry professionals as well as local mayors and advisory board commissioners. We'll look at ordinances, permitting, opportunities for small businesses, and other elements related to on-location filming. And those who attend, those municipalities that attend and individuals will walk away with a toolkit to attract and welcome productions to their community. So it also connects film and TV professionals with skilled and knowledgeable liaisons across the state. So to register for this workshop, visit eventbrite.com/e/filmreadyworkshop. If you want to learn more about the Union County Film Advisory Board, visit ucnj.org/ucfilmTV. I know I took a long time, Chairman, but I, I really do feel as passionate about history as everyone else in this room feels, but I think we do need to understand that everyone's opinion is, is valuable. I think my feeling about there being the two choices is, rather than three, is that we, you know, my feeling is we need to move forward. And I, again, I don't think that there's a problem with moving forward. It doesn't mean that we're not also looking back. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Commissioner Williams. Now, Commissioner Dr. Angela Garrettson?
Thank you. And I think my professional colleagues schooled a lot of good lessons about some of the origins of why we're here today. As I sit here and I listen and I also hear my colleagues and have been a part of the two-year journey, not just this certain journey that just started a couple of months ago, I would be remiss if I didn't acknowledge Kelly again for, again, following by having her colleagues from both sides of the aisle. her colleagues from both sides of the aisle who are supporting each other. I think that was something I requested last week. We heard it today, so I appreciate that. I am very much responsible for the change of the freeloader name to Commissioner, so I wanted to just acknowledge that, but it was a coalition. It wasn't a coalition of one, it was a coalition across the state with different voices and different perspectives, and we got that done. But I also want to say, when people acknowledge themselves or claim themselves to be a teacher, as we had the gentleman here in the front row, he probably gets the award tonight for the worst microaggressions. And if you don't know that word, you should look it up, because when my colleague, the professor, was speaking and he rolled his eyes, it was very offensive. So please don't say that you're a teacher and you can't really contain yourself as not understanding what racism looks like. So microaggressions, worst award tonight will go to you. Have a good night.
Thank you very much, Commissioner. County Council?
No comments, thank you, Chairman.
Thank you very much, County Manager.
Thank you, Chairman. Just briefly, a point of clarity. I believe I heard earlier that the Change.org petition had about 1,800 signatures. The county petition on our website has about 5,000, so I want to make sure the board was aware of those numbers. The county one on our website is only open to county residents, where the Change.org one is open to residents across the country or world, I guess. There's no restrictions, so, thank you, Chairman.
Thank you for that information. Appreciate it, County Manager.
Can I also read microaggressions? If people respond to my words, they don't understand the definition, so I think it might be helpful to clarify it.
You're welcome to.
For those who then comment on what's rude or not rude, a microaggression, for those who do not know, or who, those who might need a reminder, it is a statement in, let me enlarge it, an action or incident regarded as an instance of indirect, subtle, or unintentional discrimination against members of a marginalized group, such as a racial or ethnic minority. So if that is one of the conversations tonight and why I said there was a microaggression award, it's because as I heard my particular colleague who was speaking about race, and I saw someone roll their eyes, that's stating facts. Thank you so much, Chairman.
Thank you. Vice Chairwoman, Kimberly Palmieri-Mooded?
Thank you, Chair. Again, I would like to thank everyone for coming out once again to our meeting, just as you did two weeks ago, and not to keep going on about the same issue. But I think, you know, I stated last time that I am in support of the change, and just a small anecdote to throw out there, because I thought that this was interesting today. When my children came home from school with a couple of their classmates, my fourth graders, they were all very excited to tell me that they saw my picture today in class because their teacher brought up our website because they were voting on the new county seal as a cla, you know, as a classroom. And I know that this has gone on in, in a lot of our schools throughout the county, and besides, you know, talking about seeing their mom, and then when they clicked on the picture, they saw themselves. They actually gave me the history that we are all talking about tonight, and I thought that that was just important, because I have been a county commissioner for several years now. My kids have seen this pin on me, they've seen it here, they've seen it in many places, and they've never once acknowledged it or paid any attention to it. So I know in some of our conversations that we had over the past couple of years, we talked about our youth getting involved in this process, because it provides a learning, a history experience for them, a learning experience for them. And my kids started giving me, and their friends were telling me, some stuff that we were even talking about tonight, about Hannah Caldwell and, and the history of Union County and 21 municipalities, and I just thought that it was, it made me feel good about what we were doing, because it made me feel as though we're providing some of our youth that may not. I don't know if my kids would ever at any point say, well, what does that picture depict? But they did, and we talked about it, and then they talked about what they liked about the new seal, and so on and so forth. So, again, I just think that there's a lot of different perspectives, and I'm, I'm really happy to hear everyone's here, but I thought that that was kind of interesting on, on a different perspective, that some of our youth, that, you know, I always say I hope stay in Union County forever, have this history, and, and now it's something that they're aware of, that maybe they would not have been aware of anytime soon. So just another point, if you're looking for a family-friendly activity this weekend, come to the Trailside Nature and Science Center in Mountainside at 1:00 PM on Saturday afternoon for a presentation about wildlife from around the world, wildlife from around the world, hosted by award-winning author Marty Essen. You do need to preregister for the event. You can find the registration link at ucnj.org/trailside. After the show, you can enjoy the exhibits, visit the sensory-friendly trail, take a short walk over to the Loue playground, or hike in the Watchung Reservation. And on April 30th, we invite everyone to come out and enjoy the annual Wild Earth Fest Celebration at Trailside from 1, from 11:00 AM till 5:00 PM, rain or shine. If you have never been to this event, it is a fabulous event. Children's activities, crafts, food, music, live animals, special presentations. There is a $5 admission fee for persons seven years old and up. Children six and under are free, and you do not have to preregister for that event. You can just come and enjoy. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair. So I know Commissioner Williams stated it before, but once again, I want to make sure we're clear on it. On the website, where you have the seal options, it specifically states, "Please note, while the design concepts will remain the same, the quadrant positioning is subject to change." Okay? Also, that's just one thing. So we are listening to residents. I know I've sat down even with the president of the Historical Society of Union Township, and we've had a conversation, too, and like I, I think all our colleagues have said before, we're not always going to agree on everything. Let's be clear about that. But having a dialogue, having a conversation, and listening to some of the concerns of residents, we are taking everything into account. Now, I've seen residents come up and speak and say that, some members say that Hannah Caldwell is on windows seal options, and I've heard other individuals saying we're trying to fully get rid of Hannah Caldwell from our seal. Once again, I think we've said it before, clarify one more time, one of the options does include a portrait of Hannah Caldwell, the same type of portrait that is on the Union Township Historical Society webpage. Clear on that? When we talk about costs, costs, we are not going to be throwing away folders or paper that have the current county seal into the garbage to put a new county seal. Everything will take place, if it does go through, with time. Okay? Clear, clear on that? When we talk about the county seal, and we talk about all different topics of conversation in reference to it, you know, there's numbers of, actually, we're hearing today from County Manager, of 1,800 people. That can be from anywhere in the world. But we have almost 5,000 individuals also who are residents of Union County, who are only Union County voting members on this page, who are voting to change the county seal. I've said this before, and I'll say it again, I, I personally like the one that has the four quadrants in it. That's my personal opinion. When I've sat down with the Historical Society of Union Township, and we've had a dialogue of conversation, we've talked about what Vice Chair just talked about. In reference to educating our youth, and seeing if we do choose a new county seal, is working with schools across the county, not only to talk about the new county seal, but also enlighten individuals on Hannah Caldwell and all the contributions she made for our county but for our country. We've had that dialogue, we've had that conversation. So no one's here trying to disregard or get rid of Hannah Caldwell. Our county's dedicated a page on our county website to Hannah Caldwell. Our county, if we do go forward with moving to county seal, which I do support the four quadrants, we will be working with our school districts across the county to educate our youth, talk to residents, in reference to the contributions Hannah Caldwell has made to our country. So when we, some individuals come up here and talk about us just trying to get rid of a seal and that's it. No, it's not about that. We do believe that there's a better way to portray Hannah Caldwell, and that's what we plan on possibly doing. And four quadrants is a perfect example of that, which, once again, is on the Union Township Historical Society webpage. So that's my comments in reference to seal, but I am full support of changing the county seal to the four quadrants. But whichever option gets chosen, it's which option gets chosen. So now, to my next topic of conversation, you know, while this year I'm the chairman of the Commissioner Board, this Commissioner Board works together, and one of the initiatives that this County Commissioner Board have talked about as part of the building a stronger Union County in 2023 is a Second Chance Initiative. And as some people may know, April is Second Chance Month. So I'm announcing, for the first time ever, the Union County is going to be hosting a free expungement clinic and job fair on Thursday, April 20th, at 10:00 AM at Warren Anco Sports Center in Warren Anco Park, located at One Park Drive in Roselle. This event will have volunteer attorneys on site to meet with individuals to obtain free expungement. Employers will be present, who are willing to hire second chance individuals. Various positions are available with employers such as PepsiCo, NJ Transit, Amazon, Wake Fern, ShopRite, FedEx, the airport, Port Authority of New York, New Jersey, to name a few. There will also be organizations on site to help out veterans with discharge upgrades. While this event is free, prereg, registration is required at ucnj.org/job-fair. Walk-ins are welcome, but each single attendee will have to preregister before they're able to attend the event. So for more information, once again, please visit ucnj.org/job-fair, or call Carolina Marin at (908) 380-6237 for more information. Thank you very much. Tonight, there's a need for executive session. County Council, please make your statement relative to tonight's executive session.
Thank you, Chairman. Pursuant to provisions of the Open Public Meetings Act, a public body may enter into executive session for the purpose of discussing certain enumerated subjects. This board now wishes to enter executive session for the purpose of discussing attorney-client privileged discussion as to possible litigation concerning election procedures. The minutes of the executive session shall be separated from the minutes of the open public session. The minutes of the executive session, redacted as appropriate and necessary, shall be available in approximately 30 days. The clerk to the board shall retain the original minutes until such time as the confidential limitations have been removed, at which time they shall be made available. Upon the affirmative vote of a majority of the members present, the board may retire to executive session. Upon the board's return, it may or may not take formal action on the matters discussed. Thank you.
Thank you, County Council. May I have a motion to enter an executive session?
Second.
Motion is made by Commissioner Mirabella, seconded by Vice Chairwoman Kimberly Palmieri-Mooded. Clerk of the Board, please call the roll.
Mr. Baker?
Aye.
Mr. Bodak?
Yes.
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 Aye.
Aye.
Chairman, you have my vote in the affirmative.
May I have a motion to return from executive session?
Second.
Motion, um, may I have, I mean, motion was made by Commissioner Mirabella, seconded by Commissioner Williams. Clerk of the Board, please call the roll.
And Chairman, this is to return from executive session.
Yes.
Commissioner Baker?
Present.
That's a, that's a yes to return?
Oh, sorry.
A yes to return?
Aye.
Commissioner Bodak?
Yes.
Commissioner Garrettson?
Yes.
Commissioner Kowalski?
Yes.
Commissioner Leon?
Yes.
Commissioner Mirabella?
I don't know. I mean, I, I forgot. Say aye. I, sorry.
Aye.
I, I heard an aye, okay. Commissioner Williams?
Aye.
Vice Chairwoman Palmieri-Mooded?
Aye.
And Chairman Granados?
Aye.
Chairman, you have nine commissioners voting in the affirmative to return from executive session?
Thank you. County Council Bergen, is there anything you want to announce in reference to tonight's executive session?
Thank you, Chairman. Nothing to report at this time.
Thank you very much. May I have a motion to adjourn? May I have a second?
Second.
All right, motion by Commissioner Mirabella, I know that part, then Vice Chairwoman Kimberly Palmieri-Mooded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, meeting's adjourned.[1783.36]